Okay.
Okay, we'll call this meeting order, some workshop in preparation of the October second meeting. I guess it's October first already, wow. That was quick. We'll call please.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Here.
Malloy.
Here.
Franch Cott.
Okay, before we get started with their regular agenda, is there anyone that needs to go first? Anyone has a prior engagement appointment they need to get to? Doc, you're okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Gotcha. All right, item one, dispense the reading in the minutes. On the workshop, the regular meeting, and do we need to accept also the special meeting from last week?
I can add that if you'd like.
I mean, we did have the WRTA meeting, so we should accept, we should accept the minutes of that meeting also. About being this is tomorrow's next regular meeting for that. And just put in the special meeting. And then next week, what the. The levels were one for next week's meeting. Approve the bills, transfer monies, approve additional appropriate, oh, sorry, transfer money, EMA twenty thousand bucks.
John Hickey, Director, Cheltenham County EMA. What this is, is our annual, we move it from the LEPC account to the EMA or admin. For me doing their brands, doing all their paper.
Okay, thank you. Prove additional appropriations, auditor Yoder.
Dr. Yoder, Cheltenham County Auditor, the first three are honors. The first one is the Adenias License and Support, and a state tax paid, this is, these are path through adjustments, the next two. A state tax paid, increase in payroll refunds, domestic relations juvenile court is Microsoft three sixty-five licenses. Let's get down to senior levy and then what Bob, you see in the tree. Senior levy is the RFP award increased weightless.
Sanitaries is the OWDA loan fee for the school bill suit.
Okay, prove decrease of appropriation, senior levy.
Dr. Yoder, from the honors office, this is to adjust for the ODAC fully from reextension. And then number six, approve the transfer appropriations, adult probation is increase in joint repairs and maintenance. Auditor is a tip, you know, the difference, I count against during fund, IT is IT renewals. Board of Health is increase in telephone cost, I'm sorry, Board of Elections is increase in telephone cost. The three for Board of Health are increase in dues, increase in telephone costs, increase in GAAP cost. Common Plea is increase in dues, community mental health is transferring from capital asset account to supply accounts. When we change the capital asset policy, some things that were in capital assets account, asset, asset accounts. Need to be transferred to supplies because those changes in those amounts made them my longer capital assets. Emergency management is cleaning up the budget, involves public health highway, is an increase in vehicle maintenance, neocap, it's two new network routers. Planning Commission is CB, BG Networking November Training for CCD, sanitary engineer. I'm going to do, and jump down to Sheriff's Office. There are two here, and we're not sure why they did them in two different ones, but they're both increase in seminary trade.
First sanitary engineer, one for eighteen thousand, sixteen hundred dollars and eighty-four percent, so it's for additional water meters. Five thousand, or ten thousand dollars is for our higher yearly licensing support. And then two thousand dollars is for our school game, or five thousand dollars, school bill two. Okay, thank you.
Seven, make determination that real and present emergency exists in regards to Bradley Brownley Road foul on Johnson Township for an actual physical disaster. As determined by the county engineers occurred on the road, which is severely damaged. And perceive a necessary repairs without the process of preventative bidding. In accordance with RC three oh seven eighty-six, eight, one, and two. And award the contract submitted by Frank Martuccio asphalt paving. For emergency repairs of Bradley Brownley Road, an amount not to exceed a hundred twelve thousand eight fifty. Road was closed and remains open to local and emergency drivers only, due to severe damage occurred on June fifteenth. Project includes emergency repair sixty-seven hundred section, foot section, Bradley Brownley starting to start at haze and heading east. Payment will be received from the insurance company full amount of the contract, the project paid, Cheltenham County Engineer Fund, no general revenue fund required. Steve, another to put you on the spot with this, when it happened in June fifteenth, why are we declaring emergency in October?
The road's been closed since that time, I think it's just been going through the insurance. That whole process, I think Bill Danzo was going to be here to speak about this. I know Derek Shaffer talked last week, too.
Right, he did, and they, we found out that we couldn't do something like that without bidding, I'm just. July, I was, four months, I didn't know really why, when they declared emergency right away.
I said, I know the road's been closed since that time, it happened on the weekend, it was closed immediately. I, I believe it just been working through the insurance. Process, I think there's a police report filed, maybe sheriff's report filed. What happened? There was some equipment that was dragged on the road. Just.
Alex, Stephen Johnson, Bush Human Resources Department, to what Mr. Gerberi just spoke to, so. The process originally was kicked off through Corsa, Corsa determined that this was not going to be an eligible claim underneath the Corsa scope of, of, on our insurance and liability. So that was the first step, so it did have to go through that, so that did take a little bit of time. The claim was put through Corsa, they said this is not something that we would cover. Then after that, we bowed out gracefully, but just so you know, I do want to be quite honest, that that does take a little bit of time, I mean, you have to go through the process, you have to. Determine if it's an eligible claim through Corsa, so I'm assuming that took about, I have to go back and look through my emails back from then, but that's probably at least a good couple weeks of the chunk of time in the very beginning. Like I said, Corsa determined it was not under their scope, therefore, they went through the other legal assets of, you know. Looking at the gentleman's insurance, and I guess they worked that out that way, which was great, so.
So he's, his insurance is paying for it.
This is not a Corsa claim whatsoever.
Okay, perfect. Explains it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, number eight, current Cheltenham County Engineer grant right away permits for Enbridge Gas Ohio, three permits. And then Enbridge Gas Ohio for a separate permit. Number nine, approve the satisfaction of mortgage on the property of the homeowners Anthony and Deborah Rice. They were assisted through Cheltenham County Housing Program in twenty fourteen, the home mortgage is for ten-year declining term. Mr. and Mrs. Rice have satisfied all terms and conditions of mortgages or payments in full.
Nick. Nick Hogg, Cheltenham Clinic Commission, this is a satisfaction mortgage, it says, we have. The community housing impact preservation, the home down payment assistance, and the home rehabilitation programs all in our office. All of these, because they are federal and state grants require a climbing mortgage and a period of portability based on the amount of time. Or about the amount of money that's gone into it. At this point, you know, all of these, it's either ten-year, five-year, and the next three are going to be the same. Are being released because they exceeded their period of portability. I know there was some issue about our satisfaction of mortgage last week. It is an illegal instrument that was prepared by the prosecutor's office, still does need their signature, but. The only thing we put on there is the name of the mortgage, the amounts, and the instrument, the rest of this is a legal document prepared by the prosecutor, so. I don't know that they need to review their, their own work prior to, but they do need to sign it before it does go to report. So, I know there's some. Questions about that last week, so that is the reason it did not go for them to get reviewed prior. Did not go this week to get reviewed prior, they will sign off on it before it gets reported, because again, it's legal instrument that they, but. If you have any questions. So, as of right now, we are up to date, I don't know if you recall, a couple years ago, we did approximately a hundred or so. And we're just, these ones are now, if you see the dates, twenty fourteen on the ten-year, twenty nineteen on five-year, we're up to date. You'll probably see four to five of these every year as we go forward, and we continue to develop programs, we're going to report four or five new ones. Release four or five every year, so this is going to be an ongoing process until we know and receive funds.
So, how do they get in a program, somebody, is it somewhere, clinic commission pays the bank and then they pay us back?
No, this is a, so this is through the home program or the trip, this is a grant that we apply through for either the state or the federal government. Get our home funds to the city of Warren, there is established programs, policies, and procedures against low and moderate income households. To bring their houses up to what's called residential redevelopment standards, which looks at mechanical, structural, health, and safety deficiencies in your home. They specifically do not look at any aesthetics, only the deficiencies mechanically, structurally, and safety-wise. We will take that funds that we received in the grant form from the city of Warren, which are federal government funds for the state of Ohio. And, and pay contractor that is pre-qualified and has certifications to complete the scope of work. We place a mortgage lien on their property, and every one of these comes with a current portability, so. For a ten-year mortgage, ten-year lien, we forgive ten percent of that amount of money, so we put a hundred thousand dollars into your house. We forgive ten percent of that, every year for ten years until it's completely forgiven. At that point, when it's completely forgiven, we release. If they want to sell their home or do something, and for that mortgage or that period of portability is up. We still forgive that ten percent every year, and say they sell the lien rate, they have to pay back nearly twenty percent of their social permanent income. Of these for matching funds to help other households. But at either way, if we pay it off, we will also release that mortgage.
So if someone has a house and just barely getting by, and then some of their HVAC goes out, the furnace blows up or something, they could be used for something like that.
I would not recommend it for emergencies, emergencies, you should go through the weatherization program. That does furnaces, hot water tanks, insulation, this is for you own a home, it's not in great repair, it may have over electrical. Any kind of mechanical or structural deficiencies, because we do have a lot of people in the county, especially because we have a lot of homes. So, almost every home in this county probably needs updating, so if you're low and moderate income, apply for this program. Get assistance to update that, bring your electrical up to code, your HVAC up to code, plumbing up to code. Repair the roof if it's in, if it's getting too close to the place where it needs replaced. There's anything that's short from mechanical, and you could pick probably any household or nineteen ninety. In the county, and there's going to be something that needs to be updated to residential rehabilitation standards, so.
So, just so I understand, because we brought up the last meeting. Prosecutor's office is not looking at these because the prosecutor's office is the one that put them together?
They created this template that is a legal instrument to satisfy the mortgages. On that template, on that template, we take the mortgage that needs satisfying, we put in the name, the amount of funds that were put into the house. The date it was recorded in the instrument number, the rest is, is a legal instrument that's. And when the prosecutor's office, and not to put you on the spot, Mr. Danzo, but when they look at this, they don't look at the project information, they look at the legality of.
Well, and they're the ones that created the template.
Yeah, they don't need to look at the legality of a document that they created.
Gotcha.
So.
Alright, so then we had the first one, now we got one for Joanne Stottermeyer, which is a five-year, we got one for Tiana McQueen, which is a five-year. And we have one for Basilios McCraeus, and that was a five-year also. Okay, thank you, Nick. Thirteen, authorize board Cheltenham County Commissioners enter MOU, Cheltenham County Sanitary Engineer for the purpose of carrying out. Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvement Engineering Project, funded through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund. And American Rescue Plan Act.
Nick Hogg, sorry.
Okay.
This, Nick Hogg, is from Cheltenham Clinic Commission, this is a memorandum of understanding for commissioners to enter into an agreement with the sanitary engineer. Basically, entering into an agreement with themselves to obligate the funds approved by the ARPA attorney. For these specific projects, so thirteen is Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer, fourteen is Maplewood Park Sanitary Sewer. Fifteen is Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program that is countywide, I believe. Sixteen is the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Engineering Study. And seventeen is the Blueprint Phase Two Water Improvements Engineering Study. That's the last of them, yeah, these are, again, all been approved by the ARPA attorney, and this is a. An agreement entering into itself, essentially, your department to obligate.
Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer, are there more?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Dr. Yoder, Cheltenham County Auditor, there's, I think, five more that will be on next week, we just didn't, Julie just didn't want to overwhelm and have ten on all of them.
The first one, Meadowbrooks, one point five million, Maplewood is two hundred fifty thousand. The lateral assistance slot program, six hundred thousand, crane drive sanitary sewer study is three hundred fifty thousand. And the blueprint phase two water improvement engineering is four hundred thirty-five thousand.
And these, Dr. Yoder, Cheltenham County Auditor, these are all ones that you've already done resolutions from our, this, what this does is. As you know, we have to end of the year to make sure that our money is obligated. In, up to this point, to obligate the money, we've been covered it, we've done purchase orders, but we've got them. As we get closer to the end of the year, Julie thought of this and worked with Attorney Rogers and myself. To, to work through these, I guess there's a panel together of these, so that we would have MOUs, and we'll do this if we have other issues. With any other projects as well, but specifically these ten, we wanted to make sure that we got the money obligated. This money is not, this is money that's already been approved, it's on your allocated promisheats, it's just getting that legal obligation in before the end.
Hi, Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer, just on the titles of the projects, fourteen, yeah, that is correct, that was a sanitary engineering study. But on sixteen and seventeen, there's, there's no study there, that was for the design engineering. So sixteen, it was just a crane drive sanitary sewer engineering. And on seventeen, it's blueprint phase two engineering.
Make those corrections for more. And number eighteen, adopt a resolution authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board. To apply for, accept, and enter into H two Ohio wastewater standard grant agreement with Ohio EPA to provide a million dollars of grant funding. For Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, twenty-nine S ninety-seven. Gary?
Yeah, Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer, Commissioners, I have. I, I received a call, I don't know, about a month ago, from Representative Ohio EPA. A person I've never spoken to before, I want to call you by your name, you left me a voicemail, I gave him a call back, and he. Said, Gary, would you like more money for your Meadowbrook project? Of course I do, so, hey, we, we spoke back, and he gave us some money here from this H two Ohio wastewater grant source. And this is probably the easiest million dollars we've ever come across, I have a letter, a grant agreement here to be signed by Mr. Malloy. And will award us a million dollars of grant funds for the Meadowbrook project.
That's on top of the principal forgiveness that we already got.
Oh, yes, yes. And one of my problems in Meadowbrook was having adequate funds or connections for the low and moderate incomes, and this can be used for that also. So I mean, this is a great benefit. I like to think that they thought of us because they know, we know how to properly spend their funds, they, they know that we know the words. Be able to administer ourselves.
Gary, get to stay another week.
Alright.
You can take mom with you. Million bucks, that's great, great job, Gary. Number nineteen, approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Nicholas Clark. For the position of Sewer Line Maintenance Assistant with Cheltenham County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective October third, pay range six. From the straw posting, he has the CDO license with tanker endorsement. And has passed FMCSA query pre-employment drug screening background check. Is a new hire from outside then.
Correct.
Number twenty, amend personnel action taken by Cheltenham County Board of Commissioners September twenty-fifth. For the employment transfer, Mr. William Court to the position of package plant. Maintenance in Cheltenham County Sanitary Engineers Department Amendment is necessary to correct the pay range from eight. Two years, pay range eight, three years, as the employee's hire date was July seventh, twenty twenty-one, so just a little semantics and shoring that up.
Take, take it one.
Lucky Gary just got us a million bucks. Twenty-one, approve the supplement to the nineteen eighty-three sanitary sewer agreement between Cheltenham County. And the City of Portland for sewage treatment services. What's that mean, Gary?
Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer, Commissioners, we have an existing agreement from the City of Portland to receive their sewage flow. And it goes into our Mosquito Creek Treatment Plant. Now that we have done the upgrades on the plant, we have additional debt, and we had to amend the agreements, so that they are paying, paying. Paying their fair share of that debt, so this is an adjustment due to the recent upgrade, mosquito creek. That they will now participate in retirement with that debt.
And they, they've agreed to it already?
Yes, yeah, we've been going back and forth with them, I want to say, for six months to make sure we get this right.
Okay, to approve or deny construction of County Project number one, W nineteen. The Stillwagon Road Water Improvement Project located in Weathersfield, Hall Township. Public hearing for this project results September twelfth, results of public hearing, public hearing period indicate forty-three. When seventy-two percent of property owners are opposed, said project and fifty-six point two inner support based on benefited front footage. Okay, so the public hearing that we had, it passed without enough opposition?
Yes, Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer Commissioners, I sent over the spreadsheet to, went with this colleague, and. Yes, it looks like we have more footage in support than we do opposed. But this is a decision, it's discretion of the Commissioners, this is not something official in the revised code or anything like that. Age, as to I want to. Move forward to construction or not. But.
I would, I would like to see a motion to approve it, yeah, so historically, if it is above fifty percent in support.
Commissioners have, but it's at your discretion.
Well, I'm pleasantly surprised, I know these people on Stillwagon have been waiting for water for a long time. They're never going to see a better deal than this with the upper money that's been infused into the project, so I'm ready to pursue.
Alright, and in that same vein, Commissioners, we have that other extension on Anderson Worth Road. Up for this project, we're getting quite a bit of. Input from property owners on Anderson Worth saying that. This was in the project and he had to take it out, we had to take it out, because. And. I estimate that we would need an additional eighty-five thousand dollars of funds. From ARP in order to make that happen. And Weathersfield Township, Dave Rowan has sent you an email requesting that their ARPA request if it. To change the allocations, yes, Steve, you may be able to talk to that.
Well, I think you got it, they, the township just sent over, for, you know, we would like to reallocate the request to, to that project.
So Weathersfield Township trustees in support of the extension.
Absolutely.
That was Steve Gerberi speaking, so. How do we make this legal, and how do we do that, what's the process, do we have to do another whole hearing? How do we make this legal? And how do we do that? What's the process? Do we have to do another whole hearing? Uh do we have to do another whole ARPA grant? What's?
Martha, what, what is the status of the Weathersfield? Or it was?
I believe it's on the maybe sheet. I don't have, have a.
Okay, what, what, what was that? You were doing some.
Travel, uh, uh, community center.
A community center.
I don't think it was nine. Maybe it was just on. Um, and I mean, I I think it would probably. Was the initial. Request ruled eligible and was that resolution with the with the. The initial, it wasn't, you'd have to probably do a resolution for the initial cost. Uh because it's, it's a current project, so you don't need a resolution from her. For the project itself. She was already, the project was already found eligible, your project. They would like to have eighty-five thousand dollars added to that. I do think we'd need a resolution to change it. From I three.
Or, or at least another resolution, uh to move forward with that other. In other words, not amending the resolution, but another resolution.
Right, I I can check with her, but I mean, maybe you'll need one to be able to. To adjust it one way or the other, either amending it to. Uh because the scope, I think the scope of the project in the initial and the scope of the project, what was being done. In the initial request and the initial eligibility probably is the same. It's just increasing the amount, correct?
Yes.
So I think it would be probably just amending.
The, the only thing is, we had a public hearing on a certain scope of the project that didn't include this, so maybe a separate resolution. And I don't know, that's a question for Tom. I don't.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, the commissioners would like me to request that from Tony and try to have that.
I would, that's one part of it. The other part of it is, you know, the people in the industry didn't vote on this one, so I'm sure we're gonna have to do something. As a separate entity to include their votes or have them stand alone, let's not take the first votes. If things were to go south.
What, what I. What I see is the proper course here would be, first of all, we have to be able to say that there's eighty-five thousand dollar town. Once we do that. We're gonna have a another public hearing, but just for those people on Anderson Morris and present to them the same assessments. For front book, uh, uh, same service connection assessment cost. See if they are. Uh supportive, uh do the same thing, tally it up based on the frontage. And if they do, then it's time to uh merge those two projects together.
But that's something, I know there's a big timeframe you have for that. So we need to get on that. If we're gonna allocate this extra eighty-five thousand to the end of the year to get it.
So the first thing is allocating the additional eighty-five thousand before we go out to.
So what I can do is I will. Today, after meeting, I will email Attorney Rogers. Um I'll reference the project and and kind of I want, I want to look and make sure, I want to make sure that. The initial one was the scope of it, the things that you intended to do under that are the same. But it's just because of the cost, you have taken something out and we need to add the cost. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, and and just trying to recall, I'm not sure if I had Anderson Morris in the first one or not, so I'm.
Here's what I'm gonna do is I have, I will pull the application. I'm gonna send it to you. And let you review it, the initial request.
Well, I have the application back in my office. I, I don't know if Anderson Morris came on board after the day or P or not, so.
Just review it to see what's there and let me know and I'll make sure that the proper request is sent.
Okay.
Right?
I know you have a twenty-eight days, wherever it posted, whatever thing is, so there you go. Mr. Alzabelli, the largest property owner in that chunk?
Uh. Without looking at it, I, I'm not sure how much frontage he has on the Anderson Morris end of it. So I'm not sure if he's the largest. Yeah, he had quite a bit on Stillwagon, but this says on the Anderson Morris. I don't.
It sounds like we heard from enough people that one that I don't think it was wasted up or I think. You know, it's something where there is support for it to go further, go. Go forward with it. Okay. Twenty-three, appoint Frank Migliuzzi Health Commissioner of Trumbull County combined health district. To establish a suicide fatality review committee to review deaths by suicide occurring in the county. Disappointment being made pursuant to O R C three oh seven, six forty-one, recommendation of the administration coordinator. Um the health commissioner will select members of the board and in accordance with the revised code also. Twenty-four. To award the best proposal as submitted by inmate calling solutions. For inmate telephone and kiosks, equipment and service for use in the Trumbull County Jail with I C solutions. Don't count your opportunity to receive eighty percent commission on the total gross revenue. Of all telephone calls made by the inmates, the inmate telephone system is not a purchase. And to enter a contract with I C solutions for the inmate telephone and kiosks, equipment and services. Contract will be effective for two-year period, upon execution with a one-year renewal option at the county's discretion. Has been reviewed by the prosecutor's office. And it's gonna have fifty-six. Uh phones. Twenty-four visitation phones, one booking kiosk, one lobby kiosk. And twenty-six inmate kiosks. Um. So we're getting eighty percent commission from I C. And so we have no upfront costs. We, we just allow them to do it and then there's no cost to us. We just get paid a percentage.
That's correct. Dan Mason, Dan Mason, Trumbull County Sheriff's Office, uh that is correct. Basically, they put their equipment in here and. They do all the work and we just make profits. And they, we went out to bid uh in late July and we received. Five bids, perhaps six bids. This was the best bid. The second best bid came in from our current vendor, the uh Biff Path G T L. And there were three other bids, two were incomplete, one was late submission.
Good. And then when that money comes in, that comes in, goes to general fund, auditorium?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Do we have any idea what revenue that brings in a year?
I know it's quite a bit. I don't have the exact figure, I believe, I haven't seen the checks. I mean, I believe like six hundred dollars.
You didn't have the check.
Can you check that for us? It's, it'd be nice to know what. At twenty-five. Amend commissioners' regular meeting agenda dated July seventeen. To approve the school resource officer agreement by between Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff. And Matthews Local School District Board of Education. The amendment is necessary to replace the current agreement with a new school resource officer allowing the sheriff's department to fresh. Two deputies, the Matthews Local School, a rate of seventy thousand per deputy for a total of a hundred forty thousand. With all other terms of previous agreement remaining the same. Um they are gonna add. They're gonna have a second deputy at their request. And that's seventy thousand three seventy-seven is the current rate that covers all uh all costs involved, correct?
That's correct. Tony Villanueva, Trumbull County Sheriff's Office, um after the first agreement was uh approved, passed. Um the uh community said that they needed additional S R O for the school. So we're amending. Um in the seventy thousand, seventy-seven dollars, eighty-four cents per deputy. Is the wages as far as um the. Uh healthcare and uh some other things that are included in here as well.
Okay. Okay, then the next one is Southerlyton. We're gonna remove the request for a deputy at sixty-three thousand. And we are gonna approve and amend the school resource officer agreement between Sheriff's Department and Southerlyton School District. Uh for the new, at the new rate of seventy thousand three seventy-seven. And um and Major, we had a meeting recently and you, you went back and we looked at all the costs involved with things. And with the new contract and with the, the insurance and that and stuff on there, you were able to obtain that. That's the new rate that covers us all the way around. I appreciate your efforts in that and uh. It's being thorough with it.
That's correct. Um that is, um we're still waiting on the. The approval of the new. Contract debt, so that doesn't mean the new wage increase. Decided to maintain at twenty-seven fifty-two an hour till we have that officially signed or asked.
But this will be in effect for a year at this rate?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, number twenty-eight. Adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for eligible title one project, Staves Township Cemetery. And this is the ARPA funds in the amount of fifty-seven hundred bucks. Just probably one of the smallest ones we've done so far, but needed to survey the cemetery. Um and I, I mean, I don't mean to go backwards, but that last one, uh Major, there's a couple other schools. That are still pending on this, or we covered up the other schools right now? Are we done right now with all the school resource officer stuff?
We are just waiting on Badger.
Badger Bristol, and that'll be at the new rate also? Okay. And Alex, thank you for that too. I know you were heavily involved in making sure all costs were covered on that and and communicating with. Major Villanueva, to make sure everyone was on board the same way, with the sheriff's department, licensed schools and everyone's happy, so. Yeah, number twenty-nine. Uh enter an agreement between the board and Staves for that fifty-seven hundred dollars, the township. And. I also, Martha, saw. An email that came out a little bit later after the agenda items, that it looks like um. Staves also got approved in a future week, their generator things are coming through.
Look at this, we think there's some differences in, I'm asking. There are some differences in what money is frozen and what's been approved and I need to address that.
Sure. I just, before we went and told Staves, hey, you got fifty-seven hundred for cemetery, they're gonna ask. So I just wanted to bring that up to date. There is more coming, potentially, which we'll discuss.
And they, for last week, I had um Christie to ask about. Me informing them if they do know that there are questions on the agenda.
Fantastic. Okay, number thirty is. Recent items number thirty-two and thirty-three from our agenda last week in regards to disciplinary action taken for maintenance employees. That was something going on by another commissioner. Um. Our commissioner can put something on as long as they hit the deadline, but I'm not in favor of this at all.
There was another item requested as well, but it was after the deadline. And that's something we want you to have.
Well, she could have been here to present that and we would, as we said before, policies. Any commissioner can do it up until the deadline. After the deadline, it takes two commissioners of the workshop. Um to be able to prove to put it on for the next day, which we. Don't have, you know, we only have the word for it, so we can't prove it. We don't have to wait, but this one here. Um. I don't know if we can remove it from the agenda, but two commissioners today or we just let it ride on the agenda. And put it on for tomorrow, but I'm, you know, absolutely not in favor of that.
Let it go, it dies for life for a second after it will be. There's no discussion anyway.
Right, okay. I just didn't want that, you know, I don't want to waste time. If we can get things done here today, I don't want to waste time tomorrow's meeting with this, but if there, yeah, if there is a lack of a second tomorrow, then. There is no discussion if something died in life in a second. Okay, uh thirty-one, enter an executive session. Consider this one a public employee within maintenance department, then reconvene. And then uh the potential of. Suspension for that employee. That concludes the regular agenda. For this week, and I know we have a lot of people here that have other business.
Quickly though, can I, Commissioner, can I just go quickly? I had, I had a meeting with uh Mayor Lewis from McDonald regarding his ask. Uh from the village of McDonald about, no, Gary's aware, but painting of the water towers. That's on our maybe list and that's probably not gonna happen. I let him know because it's a substantial um ask. And um. I'm talking to him, I said, if, you know, we want to be able to assist in some way, but um. He started talking about ambulances and noticed that we did that for different communities. He asked if, if we go through uh auditor Yoder, can he submit for an ambulance? Uh and and sort of just do away with this prior ask. Um and and focus on that one, which is more manageable and and, you know, it was almost a million dollars. Initial ask, but um, so I think. Uh obviously, they have to meet the criteria and they have to, you know, have to be approved by um. Tony Roger, but, but at the same time, I'd like to give them the opportunity to get, get, you know, uh something in on our agenda for that.
Absolutely. McDonald hasn't gotten anything yet.
They had um the fire department and I, I believe it was miscellaneous equipment, but it was over a hundred thousand.
Oh, was that for?
Hundred thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars. Yes.
Okay, that was when early on, it's been.
Well, it's, the request was.
I don't follow.
That was done after we did, or in the midst of the ambulances, we had. So it's not that long ago. I can look up the dates and.
So it has been approved then where.
Oh, it's already been awarded. They, they received money.
Well, nevertheless, if they want to submit something, I think, we could at least entertain it, um and they can do away with their other ask. Um I think that's only being, they're trying to, they're trying to pare down.
Right, and they are, yeah, they are a city that often gets overlooked in the county. You don't hear much about McDonald. They don't ask for much. They don't get involved that much. They kind of keep to themselves. But that is something that with this money, we want to make sure we hit. Every entity and let them all know that they're, we care about all the entities in the county, so that is something that, they only get a hundred thousand. Being a city, um being important as they are, we, we kind of. Had that one, he said two hundred to three hundred thousand per township. I would imagine the same would go, or I'd like to see the same go for the cities. I know City Hubbard, their generator stuff was much more than that, and we've had some other entities, Cortland got, I believe, three hundred thousand. So it's not, it's not a line ask for one seventy-five for an ambulance, if they get a hundred, that only puts them at two seventy-five and I would, I would say yes. Have them do that because there is some meat left on the bone for them.
I will have you, or I will have Mayor Lewis reach out to you.
Sorry, um you have right, you have.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good call there. We, we are, we know at least we have close to nine hundred thousand. It looks like we made up. We had to give that, that at the end. Alright, let's talk about. The corner. Let's do that next. Okay, uh Dr. D'Amico is here and Doc, I want to thank you again. When I met with you a couple weeks ago, you took me and showed me the old morgue, which I can't believe you worked in those conditions. I mean, that's. Takes a special type of person on the staff to be able to work in those conditions. Then you showed me the temporary fix that you have. Which I was appalled also, the temporary fix. And again, hats off to you for making the best of a bad situation there and not asking, not complaining. Um this was me asking you, not you coming to us to complain. And then we went and looked over, met with the architect at Chestnut. Which gave us a one point eight to two point two million dollar to remodel that, that house there. They need to have to have elevator lifts and all kinds of things split. People on the second floor need special ventilation so they don't smell the. Decomposing bodies or whatever in the basement below them and the main floor below them. It just didn't seem to me like. That's a place where a morgue should be at all. Um we made that decision earlier because we had an extra building, hey, we got an extra building, just put the corner in there. Not realizing we're gonna do autopsies in there at the time. I thought we were gonna move you, when I voted for that or when I supported it. Move your offices there for your staff. Didn't realize we were gonna have to turn a building into basically an operating room on the first floor. That um is gonna require a whole hell of a lot of drainage and HVAC and. A special six year situation for what you're gonna be doing there. Um I mean, nobody thought you're gonna have a cooler on the first floor with dead bodies in it, in an old house on Chestnut Street, so. I guess. Ignorance on my end at the point of thinking, oh, it's gonna be a great building. I should have never said that in the first place. And I think. The other commissioners, if they saw it, would agree, or I hope they would agree when they saw it, there could be a better circumstance than that. So we went, we looked at um. The building they have over at the E M A building, said, hey, something like this would be good where the temporary facility is. And we got property there and we talked about, let's look at the cost. From what the engineer told me. That day was, we could build a new building and make it have everything that you need to survive, not, not the luxuries. But at less than the cost of remodeling Chestnut. So I brought that up to the board a couple weeks ago. Commissioner Campbell Lason wanted to check with the architect, uh to see how that works. Since then. Um we have another option we want to throw on the table for you, Commissioner. Um. John Hickey's here, E M A guy who has a great office, great facility. Everybody's giving kudos and praise to the facility there. He actually really likes the old fire station at the fairgrounds, the Vizzetta Avenue. And he put in a request to me that he would like to move his E M A to the fairgrounds. And there are some federal funding of. And there are some federal funding available for EMA purposes through a congressman. That may be able to help to retool that building for EMA, where it'll be centrally located in the county at the fairgrounds. And then he said, the coroner can have my building, which we can retool the garage area there. They already have the offices set up, but they have an area there that we could get into a lot cheaper than building something. And possibly do a swap there and maybe be in for a lot less money if we're able to get this federal grant to move him, put the coroner into where he is. And then everyone's happy. Then we still have the building on Chestnut, which we'll just figure something else to do. It's been gutted somewhat. We can figure something there.
Yeah, I talked to Doc about it a little bit and um, I guess it's all gonna be contingent on that million dollars. That's the big, you know, circle here.
May, may I speak of? John Hickey, Trump County EMA. I, I want to be clear. All I would speak, I'm the helper. I, I wanted to offer, when I heard that you may be going out to look at different facilities to see what would fit best. That was only an option. I'm not saying that it's the best option, anything like that. I just wanted to offer it. Cause at the end of the day, I'm happy where I'm at, okay? But if it's going to benefit the county to save money. To put uh Dr. D'Amico in, you know, basically if he can make that. Work for him, yes, ultimately I would prefer to be out at the old fire station. But it will take money. Uh, grants, you, you both know, it's a crap sheet. I apply for them all the time. I get why I came, but ultimately. That's what I'll have to have.
Well, I, I, I know that you said, uh, I mean to cut you off, but um, I know that you said you want to be out there. Have you looked at that building?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The inside of the building?
Yeah, yeah, I've walked it. And to me. That's why I said it will cost money, but you have to look at the big picture. I would have more base space. I would have my own parking.
Go ahead.
But from a financial perspective, you'd be putting in just as much money into that building as you would be Chestnut, uh, if not more.
Um. Uh, he's thinking about a million, just not too much.
But a- and I don't.
Then you gotta, then you gotta retrofit his bill.
And again, back go back to my first statement. I'm, I'm a team player. All I want to do is offer.
No.
Um, it's not something that I have to do. You know, we, I talked to the sheriff. You know, I have a, a plan for them because I know the votes for, I'm a big. Pickup with that, but you know, there are options there, so.
I mean, it, it's something to explore. I, I agree. Um, I guess we would need to know. What you would need out of that facility and how much we were looking at and then know how much. I mean, and obviously what you can get in grant money because now, now it's starting to escalate. The cost of all this is starting to escalate. I'm looking at it in total. If there isn't any grant money thing.
And, and that would be for representative Joyce. Uh, I was on the phone with his people, you know, last evening. It, it's not going to happen tomorrow. This is.
Then where do, where does the court, I mean, we are in a situation right now where we have a makeshift. Facility for you. Where does that leave you if this is not an imminent thing?
Before I address that, I want to say something about the meeting from two weeks ago. I wasn't here to defend the coroner's office for some disparaging remarks made that I think can be addressed. I'm just not asking for this grandiose building for the heck of it. Um, we basically have a morgue in a room in the basement of the hospital. Can you guys notice? You guys have done your homework. That has a steel table and inadequate thing. There is no safety standards that we pass motion today. It's a risk for county employees. If something happens, we can't defend ourselves. Because we don't follow any of the standards for protecting employees. There was also a comment made about wants and needs of the coroner. And somebody was gonna determine wants versus needs. This is a very basic build out we're talking about. There's two parts to it. There's the office part, which is basically. A standard construction offices, and then there's the morgue. The morgue is the expensive part because of the new standards to protect people working in the morgue. That's the whole cost of this project. I'm not asking for a glass building. Or a gold toilet in my private bathroom, which was would imply two weeks ago. I'm asking for basics here.
Wait, wait, Doc, who implied that? I'm just curious.
Commissioner French.
Commissioner, I don't want to name names, but obviously.
But you can't take with a broad brush like that either.
And, and the problem is, is you guys have done your homework. You've been to the office, you've been to the, the trumbled basement. You've been to the temporary morgue, you've been at the Chestnut building, you've looked at the plan, you've talked to the architect. That particular commissioner has not done any of that and we're making comments that are inaccurate. And they're getting out in the public space and they're totally inaccurate. That's not what's going on here and I just want to make that very clear.
Absolutely.
Like you said, you, you've been like a church once, you don't make a beep to complain about anything. When I saw it, I was appalled and how could you not complain? Why didn't you complain for the last couple of years? You're just not that type of person. You work with what you've been given and I, I commend you for that.
It's just dangerous now. It's dangerous for the county employees. We've kind of sidestepped it for years now, but we need an adequate workspace. And unfortunately, it's gonna cost some money. The idea is that we do it right. We don't have to do it again for fifty years. But we have to do it right. Um, you know, I, I went over a lot with the architects. I'd like to give some pros and cons of each site, if you wouldn't mind. I'll think about five minutes. So we're talking about the Chestnut building. What are the pros? We're using an existing county building. The interior would be completely redone. So the idea of, well, we use an old electrical, I mean, that doesn't exist. The whole interior has to be redone to create the morgue standards. Plans are already done for it. We've already put the cost of the plans in. It's a central location for the county. A lot happens in morgue.
Near the hospital.
Well, we won't even need the hospital, but it'll be completely independent. And things like utilities are already there, the parking lot's already there, so that reduces our cost. So what are the cons? It's got an old facade, it's an old building, even though it's gonna have a new interior. We might have a location issue with privacy and, and odor issues. Even though we're venting out the roof. When something is dead, as you can tell by a dead deer on the side of the road, even if you vent it through the roof, there's gonna be odor issues with it. Temporarily until the air clears. Because it's not on slab, that creates a lot of problems because we have, you have to use a lift and there's maintenance that goes with the lift. And there's construction we have to do in the basement to support the cooler. The estimated cost is two point two million, which is way higher than we had anticipated when we were talking about just putting a cooler in the basement. So let's go out to the North Road new construction. The beauty of that would be, it'd be a slab construction, which is ideal for a morgue. Um, we would have a new build out so we could be more exact with our things and probably downsize some of the things like the offices. Um, we're kind of in a private area, so odor's not too big of an issue, privacy's not too big of an issue. Those are the pros. The cons. Um, there's a very large electrical line that runs through that property. It's gonna limit the new build out we can do. Because to move that would be extremely costly, so it's gonna limit the size of the building. We probably could get our building on it. But there's gonna be a lot of issues with it. We'd have to do, bring in utilities, bring in sewer, bring in all new uh, new abilities. We'd have to redo the plans that we've already done. So the seventy five thousand we already spent when we went to the garbage can. We'd still have the issue with the Chestnut building, which may or may not be an issue. The new estimates on that, based on all this information, is about two point two million. So it's similar to the Chestnut. So the, on a cost basis, those two will wash. The John Hickey idea, which actually. The Hickey plan, it actually has a lot of pluses to it. It actually. If we can make everything work, it actually is, there's a lot of pluses. It's a slab construction. Back to the odor and the privacy, it's, it's good with that. The offices that are there, there's some TVs on the wall. We'd have to do some minor plaster and a little bit of painting, but the offices are basically turnkey. So we basically just be building the morgue out. Um, there's room and space out there if we ever needed to add on to this, this for some reasoning. If we would s- you know, expand the morgue issues, the estimated costs are about half. If we get the grant, so the grant's the big question. If we don't get the grant. Then probably it's the same cost to modify both buildings as it would be to do building one or building two. So what are the cons of it? The grant, we have to again do new plans. Now, they won't be quite as extensive because we don't need the office part, but still, most of the work is with the HVAC system and the. Mechanical, so it's gonna be costly, so we're throwing the Chestnut plans away we've already paid for. Back to the Chestnut building, being unused, and then we have the sheriff department votes, we have to get shelters. So there's pros and cons to all three options. I don't know what we would want to do. One issue coming up is, you know, we're in, we're in the EMA garage. And, you know, summer coming up, it has heating, but it doesn't have cooling. So we're gonna have issues in the middle of the summer when it's ninety degrees and, and hot in there. For multiple reasons, staffing, smells.
When will we know, or John, not to put you on the spot with the Hickey, more Hickey plan, let me add, but uh. When will we know a definitive as far as the, this funding source and if it's attainable? I, I mean, is this something that?
I don't have a, a date. Uh, I spoke with Adrian last evening. She's going to email me and there are two different funding sources that will come up. Now, I want to be very, very clear too. On the one grant, it would not be to rehab that whole building. It's a urgency operations center grant. So where I would put the EOC, it would pay for, you know, redoing that. You know, drywall, lighting, ceiling, carpet, that part. Uh, it wouldn't pay for, you know, upstairs offices, stuff like that. Um, so I want to be clear with that, but there is a secondary one that. Kind of replace the old earmark program. You know what I'm talking about, um, that could become available. But I don't have dates. It'll be twenty twenty five definitely. So, I.
See, once we pick a, a direction also, Commissioner, I talked to State Senator Sandy O'Brien, I talked to. Uh, Nick Santucci and Dr. David Thomas, they're state reps. They're all on board. And once you start saying the words EMA, you start saying the word coroner. That gets a little more traction, emergency services when it gets, hits Columbus. There are gonna be capital improvement dollars available at the end of the year that the governor at his discretion. Uh, is gonna be able to allocate some monies. Um, State Senator O'Brien believes being that we do autopsies for Giaga and Ashabula, but she also covers that area. It's a little easier for her to ask for money if it's gonna help affect. Uh, people in her whole district, her whole senate district. So we, we can't just apply for money and then we'll throw it somewhere. We have to have a plan of, here's what we want to do, here's where we want to do it. And then have them go out and try to get the money for it. So we have to kind of pick a direction of what we're gonna do. And involving EMA. Is gonna be a lot easier to get money than it is just, just in the corner standing alone to, to find something just for the corner. So. Uh, kudos to John for coming up with. Service to the community, um. But it is something, we gotta pick a direction of what we're gonna do with this and then aim for that direction to hit our goals of what we need.
Now, we are currently doing autopsies for other counties.
Right.
That's just a possibility, so you just have to. Be aware of that.
But if we have the facilities, as we discussed, you know, overdoses, things like that, if, if we have the facilities, we have the forensic pathologists. There also could be a revenue source. You, uh, from those other counties and all of those counties, but Portage County, Carroll County, other counties, if we have the right facilities to handle it.
And Mr. Dans is working with us because that's gonna have to go through the How Ethics Commission.
Right.
About how we would pay for this and I'm not sure we're around with that.
Uh, Bill Danso, kind of prosecutor's office, just as a quick update, um, we have, uh. Somebody in our office is looking at that right now a little bit more in depth, but uh. One of the, one of the things we just have to work through is there, there's clearly options for mutual aid. There's a, a section of the coroner's, section of the revised code. That allows for appointment of uh deputy coroners and things like that by contract. But the, the trick comes in where uh, any proposal to pay a forensic pathologist. Additional pay for doing those is where we really have to be careful from an ethics perspective. Because uh, you know, having an interest in a, in a contract where you're already a county employee, it gets into a troubling area, so. Those are the things we may have to reach out for an opinion directly from ethics on, but we are working on the legal research on that right now.
But there is an off, possibly too. If we do get contracts from other counties, we could just increase his base pay.
Yeah, it's, as Bill and I have talked, it's, it's kind of a hard issue because we don't, it's kind of a supply thing. How many is he gonna do? How much can we increase it if it's just a salary? If we increase the salary, then you increase the pension contribution and other things. So there's a lot of kind of issues. It'd be great if we could say, okay, he's gonna do a hundred, okay, we'll pay him an X amount of extra dollars, but it may be seventy five one year, maybe fifty, it may be a hundred and twenty. So it's hard to, it's very hard to quantify right now based on a salary.
So that's something that we need to know first of all, because that's a, that, that's gonna generate revenue if it's possible, in my. I mean, that's gonna determine whether or not we can. We can use some of that money to pay, pay down the debt service, you know, and, and that's, that's all enters into this when we talk about a new facility.
I can tell you right now, we have interest from other counties, um. Decently solid interest if we, if we get off of a service.
But, but I'd like to know that before we go in any direction, obviously, because that's gonna be dependent on if it's. If it's actually gonna make money or this is something that's just gonna be a assessment that you have to pay, pay the debt service on, on our. Um, so that, that certainly enters into it, I mean.
Bill Danso, again, I, I think as we discussed, I think that, you know. The, we can look just for some guidance at the, the current cost of going out to, to get an autopsy in another county. I think that we had talked before, you know, they may be close to two thousand dollars, you know, per autopsy when, when you go outside like that, so. Uh, you know, I think we can, the numbers are unknown, how many per year would come in, but we kind of have probably some baseline of how much. Other counties charge to do those services and then we just have to try to give our best estimate from there.
I can tell you, we can. Probably charge two thousand on autopsy. We're gonna provide way better service, way quicker turnaround, and people are very interested in that because they don't want to wait four months for an autopsy. So we can probably charge the same amount as, as what other counties, the bigger counties are charging and offer a much better service. The question becomes, again. It, it, well, I don't want to get into it too much, but the question becomes fifty, a hundred, a hundred and ten, how do you, how do you do that right? So that the county benefits and the forensic pathologist has to benefit too, or he's not gonna do it. So it, it has to be good for everybody.
I'm sure you thought of this, but you know, I hope it does.
I don't, I don't think we need to. I mean, I think we kind of know how they do it. You know, it's a question of structuring it more than a. You know, yeah, clearly, you know, there's, there's a number of statutes for mutual aid. Um, just generally as we've used in Fort County, then like I said, that I know that some of the contracts we've discussed in the past with Cuyahoga were based. Around kind of sort of appointing people as deputy auditors for a brief period of time. Or de- I'm sorry, deputy court. Deputy court went at a, you know, a situation where we were without a forensic pathologist or something, so. Yeah, well, we can, we can certainly work with those.
Just to complicate the matters, I don't know what numbers we're talking about. If, say, there's a demand for a two hundred out there, I don't know this. Um, and I'm just throwing it out there, our forensic pathologist can't do our county in two hundred. So I would have to hire part-time people to come in, off-hours to do that work. So that brings up a whole nother, how do we hire that? How do we pay that? A.
Is it still profitable?
Oh, it'll be all, it'll be profit.
Okay.
I mean, it would have to be on a per diem basis almost, like, okay, we need you this day, if you're gonna do four autopsies, we pay you this much. Well, it would be a struggle because obviously there's not a lot out there, like we talked before, but there are probably, probably people. There are probably, probably people in the surrounding area that are working for Cuyahoga. Actually have a guy in Pittsburgh that might be interested to come to the county, maybe one day a week, like say a Saturday. And do extra cases. So. It all becomes, how do we pay these people? That's, that's what we're struggling.
Sure. They're there, but we got to pay them.
Yeah, well. They're in demand and they're not going to do it for cheap. But again, we can both. Make out if we do this. If I can find.
I mean, and we're talking, these, these guys are doctors. I mean, so, so to pay somebody a hundred eighty thousand where they're a doctor. I mean, you expect that, since they're little kids, we all know that doctors are supposed to make a lot of money. That's what they do. So I mean, and we're not looking for, you know. Side contractor that, you know, that's working a second job and they all go do an autopsy. We're talking. Professionals in the business.
But doctors that are willing to do this on a per diem basis and just be called, you know, okay, I need you. Is there?
Don't get me wrong. I have to, I have to work to find them. And they have to be close within driving distance. So. At, at min, at minimum. See, you can go by standard numbers. So we could probably get. Two hundred seventy five cases from a pathologist, but we did two hundred last year. So there's room to do seventy five cases last year's numbers. With our pathologist. So you can say, oh, we're good for seventy five per, you know. And then we'd have to go out and. I mean, it has to be attractive to bring people in and.
But we got it. We got a medical college right there in Rootstown. We, we have Y S U and Kent State that have a pipeline. Into that. I'm sure even if he had assistance of some sort. Residents, something, there's, there's got to be a way to make it happen. I mean, you saw it, since these crime shows started on TV ten, fifteen years ago. Every college student I know wants to be a forensic pathologist. At least that's what they go to college for and they end up being an accountant or whatever, but that's what they start out.
Boy, you gotta realize these are. They're, uh. They're in demand because there's not a lot of them because a lot of people aren't going into it. It's a different profession than. We're all used to. But there, let's put it this way, there is potential. To make this a profit center for the county, depending on how we do it. And what we can do, which I guess would depend on then how much are we going to spend on?
But I guess that's the bonus. The big thing is taking care of the services for our residents. When they have a loved one die of a drug overdose or suspicious death or whatever. We. Can help facilitate closure and making sure that the family moves on as a community. By getting in the service that they need. It's a service none of us want. It's a service none of us anticipate. But it's a service that's out there. We have to do it and it's going to happen. And it was going to happen to our citizens and we have a coroner that was elected by the people. He should be able to do his job for the people. We as the commissioners, funding structure on tax money. You know, need to support that in a sense. I mean, they, ours, why even have a, a corner? Why even have it if it's a service we're just going to. Disregard or, or put at the bottom of the list. We can't do that. Uh, we deserve.
I agree. I agree on that.
People, citizens deserve closure. They deserve a professional. A professional telling them what happened and not. A gas or not sending it off and waiting four months and. And getting a twenty three and me in the mail that says, here's what they died of and you don't understand anything.
So what are you guys thinking about our pretty obvious?
I, 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 I think there's, like you said, there's pros and cons to both. And I think the, the biggest pro would be if there was additional funding. With that facility for EMA. I mean, obviously that can't be overlooked because. That your cost wouldn't be as great, his cost wouldn't be as great. Then we're just left with Chestnut. And still an albatross, it would still be an albatross, but it would be a more manageable. When, when you're saving money and needs to.
We, we owns is that a fire department or the fair.
But I urge you to go through that building.
I understand.
It hasn't been used or utilized for a long time. Bill, you can speak to that.
Oh, yeah. Commissioners, Bill Hart, County meetings. Um, just so we know too as well that. Four H.
Four H is the building.
Get their new facility built.
It's for bill.
And with that being said as well, um, in the plans, you don't have any. Um, installation, drywall and the interior is still built. So if you need to look into restructuring, design a new four H facility so they have their own. Meeting room and their own place to go instead of using the fire department or in the back where the big table is. That's something that has to be restructured and brought up. So when we design this to get ready to go out. It's going to be an adjustment to the fund. Of the articles that we received.
Sure.
Um, facility through all that out there as well. And to boot, I'm going to give the auditor a little over five thousand dollars back into the general fund. Project. So once I get that exact number, I get to work it into your system from their system. So.
Bill, Bill, what are your estimation when you think building to grant? When you talk about these options. Obviously there's pros and cons all.
They're all, they're all feasible, but like you said, on John's deal, it's on, it's on the million dollar grant. Because that, that funding itself.
That changes thing.
It, it needs, needs help, but he's willing. That's all it is standards. That's what he needs.
Yeah, my biggest thing too is talking about the HVAC and stuff. I don't think Mr. Accardino or the ITM twenty nine or the VFW right there. Across from the morgue or across the chestnut. Would like, you know, like you said, the middle of summer. They've got a decomposed body that they're doing something with and blowing it out the.
Yeah.
If, uh, that's, that's not real conducive for a neighborhood. If I lived there, I'd be a little.
It's going to smell. I mean, even if you vent it out the roof for, for ten, fifteen minutes or till the wind blows hard. You can smell it.
I just had a couple of things. Bill Danzo again prosecutor's office. Um, first of all, I, I think the one thing that I do, I, I do want to say is I agree with auditor Yoder. It is auditor this time, not coroner. I think that what we could do, one thing is, uh, is when it comes to like Cuyahoga and things, explore how they structure their pay. Uh, like I said, we know that we can have these contracts. The question is, you know, how we, and again, I think the good thing with ethics on that is that. Uh, as, as you guys know too, we follow the opinions of the ethics commission. There's an immunity that comes along with that, but. Couple of other things though, that just, I think the commissioners might want to keep in mind as you think about these options. Uh, first, it's my recollection that the current EMA building was built with grant funds. So I, I kind of just want to make sure that it wasn't like one of those things that. Nick Hawkins was talking about earlier where you have to stay in the building for twenty years or else you repay the EMA grant. Uh, I don't recall what other grant conditions were on that, but it's something that's. Yeah, that would have been. Twenty twelve, that, that sounds about right. Yeah. So. Uh, I don't. I remember the, the construction phase of it, but I don't remember what the grant conditions were. So just something to keep in mind. Uh, the other thing is, and this is a very minor point, but technically. The revised code calls for the, uh, coroner's office and board to be in the county seat. But there is a, there is a, basically the board has to pass a resolution with public notice. I was, I was going to say, is that, that's technically. Okay, I wasn't sure. So. The bottom line is even if it was a location outside the city, there's a way to do a resolution to. I got off to, uh, move with the coroner's consent. So that's minor, but I just wanted to kind of put that on.
So commissioners, I was just going to, I, I just. Goodness to myself, but I was going to say the same thing to Bill. The only question that I would have is Alex Steven Johnson, she had resources for it. Typically when there is grant monies, which we did establish looking into this early on, that, that EMA was built with grant monies. Um, roughly probably three million, I think was what it was at the time, somewhere around there. Uh, either way though, we would definitely need to make sure that there is to Bill's point, you know. Would there even be an option to get and obtain another grant when they had already built them a specifically nice, beautiful building? And what are the years, right? Like, did they have to stay in there ten years, twenty years? Is that funding tied, that grant funding tied to a term limit? And would they be so willing? And again, I, I hope, I wish, I think that's a great situation and scenario, but. Would they be willing to give us another one, two, three million when they just gave us three million ten years ago? I don't know. Okay. Well, that's good, but it is just for the EMA portion too. And I want to make sure we're all hearing that too. This portion would just be. Yes, that's right. With the, with the tag, correct. They helped add to the kitty, you know, like they helped boost that grant money. With the tag being next door to the EMA and, and the facility in general. So again, all things that we need to definitely look at. Thank you for bringing that because I was waiting to say that, but I didn't want to.
Myself. Question.
Yes, that's why, yeah.
The reason I bring this up.
Yep.
I actually had a building built. Now. But they, what. The feds have done, they have not given any years. Summer between twenty to fifty years.
Okay.
It's told. We had to keep the building. But. Thing was, you have to keep it in-house. So as long as you, just to verify, it's like, but as long as you would keep it for one county. Keep it in the county.
Like with a mechanic.
You're fine. That's why I was told. So it was twen- twenty to fifty. There's nothing on, last I knew, there was nothing on the books, how many years.
And I think it's more so, it's, that's good to know, Mike, but all things we need to look into. But I think it's more so a. Would they be entertaining another additional grant? It is my, it's more so the question of, you know, it's kind of too cool, right? Um, things that everybody needs to look into, not necessarily myself, but I'm just.
So what's our next step?
Well, well, when this, when this is done, I'm going to call Congressman Joyce myself. And, and I'll talk to Nick Santucci, David Thomas, and let him go again. Moving forward, start digging in to see what's out there, give us some advice. I know, uh. Dave Joyce is on the appropriations committee now, is one of the best committees to be on. And he, I know he's charmed a bit to do something for us and more, you know, he. Is somewhat new to us as a congressman, but every time I see him, he's like, hey. Got to get something going there. The way he wants, he wants to establish himself as. Helping out this area. I mean, he's, he's been Ashville, Geographer for many years. This is new to him and I know he wants to help us in some way. So. He's always saying, once he asks, what do you need? When it came to my drilling, it's right there on it. And.
And my approval is going to depend on the level of support that we.
Sure.
You know, that's, that, that's, that's what it's going to come down to.
We got to pay for it somewhere, but if we build the area at least resistance financially. Um, but something that's going to. Provide the best results also long term. We got to look at. We know, we know we can put them in a garage. They work cheap. We're not going to do that. We can't, we can't have that. That's just not.
Doc, is that? I, I mean, that's, that's sort of the immediate thing as far as, you know, I mean, obviously. From party standpoint, you can talk to Congressman Joyce, maybe the best out of the board. And, and, uh, maybe short, short of a commitment for that. Go from there.
I mean, as soon as we can move forward, again, we're facing these challenges this summer that are just going to be odd. Cause, uh, working in a humid environment when it's ninety. With gowns on and masks and all that.
But just from our perspective, it's the gatekeepers of the county. We have to make sure we're doing our. Financial due diligence.
Completely interesting. I completely agree.
But we'll, we're moving on.
Now we got a lot of fingers out. We got dog, we got nine one ones. We had this, there's a lot going on, but that's progress. That's over here for us. The rest of the county forwarding future into new economic time. So. Go ahead. Steve, you have something?
Yes, Steve, very, very terminal county engineer's office.
Absolutely. Thank you, Doc.
The commissioners, you may know that last week on, on Friday. Bins were open for railroad crossing. There's some concerns with comparative. Some of those concerns, they, they were the contractor for our salt dome. That was built. People had to get involved. Uh, ten thousand dollar settlement on that building because it wasn't constructed in time. They have some contractual issues in Mahoney County. I don't know the all the details that's been in the news recently. And over in Beaver County in Pennsylvania, they had a fatality. So just to, that, that'll be coming through this week for you guys to consider next week. Just, just keep those states.
Are, are they the lowest and best, most responsible or that, are, are you?
Lowest, I believe the second bidder is still within the twenty percent threshold.
I mean, in light of those issues. I, I know we're talking about as well, but in light of all those issues and some of them have been being public. Especially OSHA violations, if that's the case. I think commissioners, take a hard look at that.
That's why we're just bringing it into your attention so you can look at it. You know, you're, you're.
I appreciate that. Yeah. We want to, we want to make sure we're. Project is safe. Everyone working on the project is safe. So. Yeah, if you can't send it over and. Uh, there's been a track record there unfortunately. So.
Right, absolutely.
Jason. Okay, anything more from the sheriff's department? Gary, you're good. Bill Danzo, good. Mike Solomon.
I've got. So. Next week I'll be coming back. Diane will come back tomorrow. Uh, we're going to advertise for our. This will be a three-year. Contract. The other contracts expire as of November. So Diane will also come in to get inspections. Cause we want to start at these February first. Cause the other one was a two plus one. I have to come to you. I've already gone to, uh. To the providers, they said, yes. That's like, they said. Oh, what I really like, do want to bring up though is something called. Human Service Coordination Plan. Okay. We, right now we have a place called Mahoney, Toma County, where they have a public transportation, human services transportation plan. It's a four-year plan. It expires, uh, October twenty first, twenty twenty five. Plan does is if you're, you're requesting fifty three ton money, which is what we are requesting. To be disabled, you have to have this plan. You don't have the plan. You will be denied. So this plan expires, uh, point five five. This plan originally costs at the time we did it. Thirty nine thousand one hundred dollars. It was. Cost was split between. Toma County Transit Board at the time. And W R T A. Reason I'm going through all this is because I'm, I'm putting it all together. W R T A has already tried for a grant for this. If they were to that. And at this time, they guarantee it's not going to put any money. I need to explain. So. I, uh.
Why were they not?
I have no idea. I, I talked to Dean, Dean's the one I was talking about the plan. He said, yeah, I applied. Uh, to do this again. And he was denied. Um, I've actually asked. Uh, ODAT, if there's money for this. They said, no, there's not. At the time he'd go up to this, this, there's no money for this. This is going to happen second.
So when does the coordinator sign up?
October twenty first, twenty twenty five. So then that next step was to get a hold of people. Yeah, 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 decent. And I asked them several questions. Number one, are you willing to take the lead on this project? Or. Toma County people. They said, no, but I want to take the lead. Number two, they are willing to help out with part of this project during the year round to celebrate some something. Then I asked them, are you going to fund it? Said, no, but I want to fund this. So I'm going to a meeting. Thursday, the tech, the tech meeting, bring this up. So as of right now. Funding is coming back. One. Call it good thing or not, we can do a one county plan. It doesn't have to be two towns. So I'm assuming commissioners don't want to pay. Both counties. So like I said, this plan costs about forty thousand. We can probably get it for about twenty. Even one plant with one town. Now, when I. Mentioned this to ODAT, what happens is anybody from. Only county that's applying for it will be denied. And as far as I know, I've already double checked with all that. Uh, the last several years, no one even from Mahoney County. Home County hasn't applied. So. Might not, it might be a. Just go with the one plan. I've already talked to Diane. And they're starting. Uh, if the plan gets about twenty thousand or less. Uh, if the plan gets about twenty thousand or less. Uh, Diane's wanted to take part of the senior loving money, put it in, need more, put part of the money in, then. I'm coming to you, you know, to help.
Well, yeah, we absolutely need it.
All right, if you're gonna put in three, three ways, split twenty grand, that's not.
But I mean, what's fifty-three ten generate?
Fifty-three, no, fifty, yeah, fifty-three ten generates over five hundred thousand dollars a year. So, we're talking, for over four years, we're talking two million dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
So we need to have.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying, no, we need to have a plan, and somebody keeps telling me, well, the state should be paying, I don't care if the state's supposed to be paying. We gotta have the plan, if the state's not gonna pay for it, and if that's come down, I don't, that's a whole other thing I'll worry about later. And the bottom line is, we need a plan now.
Well, there's too much money on the table.
State representative on this?
I have not talked with state.
You need to do that, too.
Um, so anyways, my, my next question is, I will definitely go out and get quotes for this, cause I don't have to do an RFP. What my, um, I've really never done quotes, I always do RFPs, so I just need some assistance with going up for quotes. That's not, we ask somebody to fill it over.
Yeah, when I first start to state represent, set up one with state representative, and see if he can get involved with this with. ODAT, or why they're not paying it, or why they're not covering it, let him do what he does.
Again, I, I try to understand what you're saying, I really care whether I'm paying it, does bother me at this point. What bothers me is, this plan has to get done, and between the red tape, it would take too long to, I'll do, so, so I.
When you got a year, right, you said October twenty first, twenty twenty five?
Yeah, but the plan takes about six months to put together.
Yeah, so then you got six months to spare.
Well. Give or take.
Yeah, you can set a meeting up tomorrow, or next week.
I will, but the thing is, I can, I will reach out to them, but the thing is, I, I would just go, I'm, I'm moving forward with.
Yeah, but if there is some assistance out there, we have to.
Right, if there's some assistance, no, no, if there's some assistance, I, we can get, possibly get assistance after the fact. I, I don't want to prolong this, because I've, I've already been told, I've got, you gotta basically be in a contract by end of October, personal bound. To get this ball rolled, so we have less than thirty minutes. That's, just wanna bring that up. Thank you, um, I don't know who's gonna help me with, I put a smokework together, but I just need to have it. So that my, I need to get my.
We're saying that that's, these state reps, that's their jobs, is that, without God, and. State agencies, that's, that's kinda what they represent us for, we need, need to have meetings with them too, on this whole big transportation deal too. They should be included in the process of us, not just city, Warren, and county commissioners, we need our state reps involved in this also, because. State's a big portion of this money, we need, just like, we need to meet with our congressman, it's also the same thing. We need rail transportation, what can you help us with?
I, I do know the one thing that, like, and I said something to state, they said. By the time you go off for a grant to get this money, it's gonna be too late to go on. That's what.
Then we'll be the first in line for the next grant in twenty twenty seven or whatever, but we need to start the process.
So we will be the lead agency on this project instead of, so we are, so we are, it wasn't the agency. So, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Showtime.
I see you're in Toma County, I hear, um, so first of all, eligible, ineligible, and their updates. So pending with the term Rogers is, uh, the Kyler Foundation, the Culver Lake, she's not hers, but the O D N R. Um, she's asking, how much effort should she be putting forth, and seeing if it's being qualified. Been sitting for a while.
This has been sitting for a while, I know she, she was waiting for, um. Trustee that started all this stuff, last time he was in here, he hadn't had any news on anything, this kind of thing was like, hurry up and wait. Um, I still haven't seen anything that shows it's gonna be turned over to private possession, or public possession. Or anything from the ownership group yet, there's nothing's come by our desk that the ownership group is even willing to turn this over to. A public entity after a damn study or before the damn study's done, so at this point, I'm. I'm leaning more toward putting the brakes on this thing, and saying, let's move on with the money into a different direction on this, being that, how much more are we gonna keep asking and. And not getting any response back, we shouldn't be the lead on this, uh, other people took the lead, they asked for it, we said, here's what we need. She's been waiting at least four months now for this information.
So who's taking the lead?
No, I mean, it's, it's, she was trying to talk to ODNR, and she hasn't gotten any response, as when this went. Follow your, to see if it's still qualified, and basically see if we're ready for the right. Didn't got the interest from ODNR, she also doesn't always get a lot of communication from trustee Pedro. Although he's not doing this since the past week, she's.
Right.
Anyway, seeing the connection. And, so, she doesn't really see the true connection, she's.
Well, there, there seems there really is, the nonprofit started this, awareness, but there's no tie-in with the ownership group, that actually owns the dam. Or it's dealt with ODNR, other than conversations and public meetings, that's what I'm saying, we're doing a lot of work and paying her a lot of money to do research. On something that, I think she's spinning her wheels now, because they're, even if they came back and. Gave us the answer she's waiting for, we still, I don't believe, can vote on it, you know, if it's. Going to a private business to fix up the dam that they can turn around and sell. Property, there's no agreement, no MOA, MOU, no nothing as far as that goes, that's gonna be something that's undertook by. That group that started this whole thing, and right now, we're seeing our money's gonna be spent by the end of the year. And we're gonna come up against the wall and be like, last minute, hurrying up Hail Mary pass to somebody, cause this money's being tied up.
So, so commissioners, do you want me to go ahead and like, be down with it, like, just one other request? Remove it from the guest list, put it on, on the media list, so it's still there, um, and have her stop.
At, at this point, I would say yes. The wall's gonna be.
Great, um, the other ones that are still pending are, are the failing community services, so that's just. Three leaders, how conscious that's the, um. If we leave, yeah, the whole, and we're still. Um, we did have some things that were found eligible, um, as you did, that's the cemetery surveys on your agenda. Um, there were several generator requests that came through that Julie Gray worked on, uh, with, um. Attorney Rogers, um, and, but there's also some differences in what was frozen and what was actually ruled on. Um, because Davis Generator, Generator, um, is forty-five thousand five hundred eighty-eight, several. Actually, um, they had thirty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars in frozen funds, the fifty-seven hundred dollar difference, and she found there. Um, that Davis had had a hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars in awards, including the cemetery survey. Um, do you want to completely fund the generators at that forty-five five eighty-eight, or do you want the, um, do you want them to have some?
They're still way under the threshold of all the ambulances that the other townships got, and so I would say, I'd like to fund the actual fifty-seven hundred.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And then one, and, um, do you want the resolutions?
Sure, yes.
Hubbard Township Generator, ninety-two thousand four hundred and eight dollars, Hubbard had seventy-six thousand three hundred fifty dollars in frozen funds. Hubbard has fifteen thousand six hundred thirty dollars, Hubbard has no other awards, do you want completely fund the generators or ask them to?
Completely.
And then do you want, she's.
Yes, yes.
Kinson Township Generator, sixteen thousand dollars, um, Kinson has fifteen thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars in frozen funds. Difference of maybe a hundred and seventy-five dollars, Kinson has a hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred sixteen awards. And twenty thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars in frozen funds that are designated to the pending culver request. Do you want to completely fund the generator, ask them to?
Yes.
Well, the.
Generator, and do you want the resolutions?
Yes.
What is the, what is the pending culver, so, they just got township part, now they're getting generators, what is the?
That, that was part of their frozen funds that they had, they came back with it, they came back with a request. The, the generator and the, the culver to take up the frozen funds, but the, the generator.
That's from the police department building? That there was denied initially, and that's what we froze it from?
No, 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 well, yes, we, I guess, yeah. Look up, but, yeah, that's already, that's on the list right now, it hasn't gone.
Yes.
All right, um, then the last thing is the three number one requests are eligible, I sent you the letter last night, I forwarded it to all three of you. This money has already been set aside in the allocated promise sheet, do you want me to request a resolution to an exit's agenda? And if you have some questions, Stacy is here, as well as Vicky, to answer how these, uh, three requests work. Along with the goal.
Okay, when did we, when did we put those on the yes list?
They've been on the allocated promise list that I inherited, it's on this list, not this one.
Sure.
The allocated promise, they just were never ruled eligible, ineligible, and the confusion there happened. Because there were several changes to the request, uh, last spring, a year, a year ago, over a year ago. And prior to Stacy coming in, and I believe that, and in talking to Musaki. They never got sent to the attorney, although money was set aside, because we weren't sure if Stacy would have some changes to them. And so, we wanted to wait on, and so Stacy does not have to do this to them, um, and would like to have each request on. But they are, and, and there's three requests, but they're set in two different places on the, um, list. The phone stations, which are a hundred and thirty-two, two fifty-five, twenty-four, and then. There are two other requests for mobile units, which will work in, um, mobile command center for, at the next page. So it's, uh, the first one is on the third page, um, about five, or four, in the revenue loss category. And then, that's a one thirty-two, two fifty-five, and then, the, um. They see marks reviews, but they're really mobile units, and they're, oh, my wording, sometimes, about five down in the next page for five.
Thanks, McDonald, nine one one director, um, as Audrey Oder said, um, these were all requests put in, I think, over two years ago in total. Um, I heard about them shortly after I came on, Patty had initially put in the, uh, request for. Workstations that could be put at, say, Warren or a backup site for model one, when she found out that John was gonna be getting the mobile command unit. Potentially, um, she decided to go with portable units, which basically could go inside that mobile command unit. Or they could be taken to, say, another police agency if we ever needed to relocate in an emergency. Uh, after talking with John and Patty, we kinda decided that it's the right way to go, and our plan is to go ahead and put them completely in the mobile command unit. Because if we ever do need to relocate, we could just go into that unit, wherever that unit could hook up at, um.
Just to interrupt it, I believe you're talking about possibly also keeping one dispatching.
Yes, and one station will be at E M A, so if there's ever like a mass casualty incident or anything like that. We could actually send a dispatcher over to E M A, and they could work strictly out of that office with him, and handle anything that he would need to handle that incident. What makes sense for this, instead of just having them in, say, a portable case, where we put them in our office, and we could take them somewhere we need to. Order the mobile command unit, and once that gets up and running, is what happens then if you have an incident that jumps off and you need to go. Right now, now we need to get a hold of I T or somebody else to try to hook them up and make sure they're operational and they're functioning. If we already go ahead and put them in the command unit and outfit them and have them running, they can be tested monthly, they're already ready to go, we know they're not messed with. They're not in a room where somebody can walk in and out, you know, any of those things, so it just makes sense. Um, this does give us a hot backup bin, so if something were to happen with our building, let's say we flood again, or, or anything like that. We already have somewhere where we can go to start dispatching.
And just to, to clarify too, we're talking about, uh, two things, one, the prices that you've got right now are only good through.
November fifteenth, we have to sign and, and allot the money and order the equipment, and that's because they honored the prices from two, two years ago. We know those prices are not the same, so they were able to go back to the vendors and say, hey, like, this was an ARPA thing, and they honored those prices.
And, and also, I know that we're talking about when can, can you that we're moving on that. Um, Mr. Hickey has that ready, next week's agenda to do the, uh, bit, bit of process to get started on that. We, we passed the resolution last week, so that we can move forward on that, so that those are both moving. And fairly rapidly, as, as rapidly as we can.
Does, does this get a majority of the stuff you'll need for the command unit, or is this just a piece of it?
Um, John, Hickey, Toma County, my, my question, we had a little meeting yesterday. Because I wanted to make sure that that cost was not included in the command.
Right, and the, and the money that's been set aside, it's been a million for the command post, and then plus these two requests, so that's already been set.
Our command post, the day it arrives. Turnkey, now, like we discussed yesterday, I'm good, but not that good. I may forget something, and I wanted to have an avenue to. You know, in three months from now, I, you know, what we forgot, I will switch, whatever. I wanted to have that avenue, because aren't we going to, is, is that vehicle going to cost a billion? Probably not. I want, but I want the ability to pull from them funds if we have to, get something after.
It's just like with the Mars Tower, um, and the electric and all of that, anything that is necessary. We don't have to have a new resolution, and I'll, I know, we'll double check, but, but what we would like to do, what we may end up doing. Depending how fast the process goes, is doing an MOU similar to what we were doing for cemetery, to make sure that we have all the components.
And our portion of it, once the equipment's ordered, won't have it, it'll just need to be outfitted and installed.
So my question for commissioners now is, do you want me to go ahead and request resolutions for the agenda?
Yeah, and these are already, these are already on the thing, they're not part of the remaining funds, you can tell us.
It's been, already been reserved, it just, it was, actually, I didn't realize that we didn't have eligibility on this, you know, compared to the sheet. And I thought everything on the sheet had eligibility already.
Being that, being that it has been a year and a half, is that stuff still current and updated, I know you said the prices, it's still the same stuff, or is it?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Modern stuff.
We don't know yet, till it.
But with regard to then, to our equipment, yes.
Like, when, uh, if, if they have like, uh, like, an iPhone thirteen, is there a fifteen or sixteen in this equipment that we're buying old technology?
No, the, the nice thing with this, with the Marx radio units, what it'll do is it'll actually update our equipment within dispatch as well. So our radios inside dispatch are, I can't remember what they, what they call them, let's say it's the operating system of ten. They're now on twelve, it will update all our positions at dispatch, as well as the new ones that we're getting. Because the new mobile ones aren't compatible with what we have in dispatch, they have to update them all, so that's actually fully to that and including, so they'll actually be updating our.
We have had situations where we bought. Something for nine one one that was never used, almost a half a million dollars of the equipment that's, was sitting there, not able to talk to each other. Back and forth, we dealt with this a year ago, we wanna make sure we don't dump any more needless money. Um, that, that's my only concern, that's to make sure we're.
I, yeah, I'm not aware of what you're referring to, but I know.
Chaff system, then, then we couldn't compatible with this, and they want to talk to each other type of things, that was preu, preu. But still, it was a cost that.
Oh, I'm sure, I, all I can tell you is, the technology that we're getting in this will be current, and it will update the technology that we currently have. So it's not like you're buying something that's already, you're all out of shelf, it's updated.
Uh, next, coming into your office, as I said last, last week, it's working for us, we chose working with the township to agree with. With the frozen funds and same conversion, it's that out hundred thousand from, that's about a hundred and seventy thousand. Funds that were frozen, uh, Bishop here has informed the benefit of ineligible of his request and the freezing of funds. I've also connected him with you, great to work on finding eligible requests. Heard the meeting last week, I moved Mecca Town, the Mecca Township request to the yes sheet. I emailed a new application to trustee Clemson, trustee Clemson also communicated exactly what her concerns were. Regarding the initial application, I made the suggestion that since Julie. I made a suggestion that since Julie Green and assisted other townships, that perhaps she would be a good person. To look at the application for it actually went to Attorney Rogers and help me get the changes done. Needed a trustee from Clemson's request, I connected the two of them and gave the original application to Julie. Um, you were given the allocated promise and the yes sheet, here's the bottom line spreadsheet. Um, so the number now is a little bit different.
Sorry, thank you, I have a meeting, I'm gonna get two seconds.
Um, to be based on some of the things that were being discussed today, so um, that six fourteen two ninety. Uh, that I originally came up with, the reason it was lower than what you had thought, Fisher, is that we put that hundred and seventy thousand. On the other side, right, um, and also the, the changes on the general. However, then, then taking that eighty five thousand that you are also going to be for stole. So that would have brought it down to five twenty nine two ninety one, however, in adding back the Culver money. It comes up to eight twenty seven, so that's where we're at, that's where your new look, new one will look like.
Thank, now, um, auditor, on this, this sheet, these are all the allocators spent, right?
Right, yes.
Is there a way we can go down this, or maybe you already have to show which ones already said and done, done checks written out the door? And which ones have money coming back?
Okay, what I, I haven't done that a completely, but one thing that you maybe have to admit that will help you a little bit is. What we've actually spent, if you look at the amount age column, that age column, all the way down. What's hap, what the money has actually already been spent by the county, that goes all the way. And. We said twenty three thousand, or twenty three million six hundred and twenty two thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. We have currently in Culver, five, about five point seven, so that I can be, but I can go through and get through. Um, as honestly, as I know things are coming back or have come back, so we had, say, we have a, I have one that I need to buy. But we had the P O on the J F S windows, liquidated that, needed verified, we liquidated that, we'll be out eighteen seventy five, maybe somewhere. So, as we liquidate P Os and end things, I do turn that money to the total. So, and so that's, as things come back, I do that, I can tell you, um. I can go through and get exactly what's been done and somehow color code it on here for you guys, I just haven't. Right, but I'll.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Gary New Ross, Antonio Deere, uh, Fisher is on that still wagon run, remember the public hearing. This included taking the excess money from the. Project, if counting that toward the still wagon road.
Right.
So.
One of the things we're going to have to do very hard is, I need, if you can email me exactly what you're taking. From each of those to that, we're gonna have your resolutions to do.
Okay.
And I have to get that through yours, so we have to, we have to do it officially.
Alright, okay.
And I, I, I realize, yours in particular, you're very.
Oh, I know exactly what that is.
I love you for it, but, but we need to, and I, I, as you, and we need to take sure that we re-put it. One, but we also, before we do that, or add it to, like, say, we're, we're gonna put it on that, on the sheet. We need to get that officially, so we'll, we'll start with that stuff, and then we'll do it soon.
Okay.
The ones where we brought money that are back, that are done, and and I've really already done those, where I would put it back. Because, but I just don't know which, I haven't marked those on there, so. Those are usually, those are. Um, uh, we haven't even bought to enable sub award. Uh, we, we have a. Um, that, the, but the county ones we have. Um, and we're, and there's things that are still in ours, like the Marx Tower, there's extra expenses for your life, so things like that, um, scares. Uh, but I will be glad to like actually mark.
Okay, I'd like to, just one thing I'd like to bring up on this, community family outreach, they got denied on their kitchen project that we talked about here.
Yes.
They already got a hundred and seventy eight thousand program, and you said you put it back to Julie to look for something else.
Because you guys last week said you want to.
Right.
If you don't want to freeze the money, then that's fine, but.
That's what, that's what I'm gonna ask now, they've got a hundred and seventy eight already, the, they tried to partner up project didn't work, they tried another project didn't work. I'd like to put that money back and pay that fifty thousand for another one that's waiting.
The, what did you tell Bishop Karen?
I, I mean, he's, um, if we have to, I mean, he's got a hundred and seventy eight, they can reapply for something. But I don't want it frozen at this point, when we come to the end of the year, I'm gonna hurry up and find something to spend it there, when we have a whole bunch of people.
Well, I don't know if, if we actually, I can act and I can check for Julie.
And you, can, before we say no, can we make sure that Julie's contacted them?
I'm sure they're gonna find something, but if there's, isn't anything pending, waiting, that they're already, well, we need this too. I'm saying there's, there's, we have a whole bunch of maybes that are hoping to give them something, and that fifty grand could be spent other ways.
I emailed him. Initially, it said it was frozen. I then, after talking to Julie, she suggested that she might email that out, and I emailed it to. I don't know, he never responded, so I don't know if she's.
Can we wait, uh, I just asked, will we wait a week until we find out that he's contacted her?
We can wait a week, or, but like you said, by taking it unfrozen, we're not gonna spend it in the next week, they can reapply for another grant and be right there with the other maybes. Uh, but at least it gives us an option to start looking at some of these other ones without it being on hold.
Right, I will ask, I will talk to Julie and I will ask.
Yes.
This way of people calling saying, hey, you get a maybe jet, you get a maybe jet, and they give a guy three chances, lovely guy, I love the project. They already got a hundred and seventy eight, it's an unprofit, which is way more than a lot of townships are getting. And, and there are other needs out there from townships and.
Just to. One, just one more question, so we removed or we put, moved the entire location. Did that means she's just gotten three, that are three in the market, that's right, you know, do you want me to go ahead and send you? There's two left on the, um, well, one was completely redone, would be the Kidson. The Culver, the Mecca Township one, Julie needs to work with, um, trustee Clemson on there. Do you want me to go ahead and send Culver one over to, um, Attorney Rogers? And then, once uh Julie is done with the working with trustee Clemson on the Mecca one, then people. Yeah, Kidson.
You said Culver. Well, Culver, okay.
Um, do you want, so that we can get everything on your desk?
That's fine, yes. And then I'd like to, if we could have a more of an update, if you can get to it next week, as far as. Where we are and maybe a little better of what hasn't been spent yet that may be coming back to us, then I could schedule a meeting for the end of October.
That's fine, I, I.
For us to look at the maybes again.
Sure, I mean, I can tell you what they completed on. But it, as things get completed, as I know, I already returned that money. So, I don't, I can't predict things very well, because I'm not a person who's very into the project. Um, I'll be, I'll, I'll do my best for you on that, but I, I can't say, oh, this is gonna come back, but I don't know that.
No, understand, understand, I'm just trying to get a clearer picture so we can actually have our meeting and go over the maybe list.
I did.
Um, because that's coming up toward the end of the year, with this term of commissioners, I'd like for us to be able to allocate it and not have it carry over. Uh, you said we're here?
No, I'm fine, this is good. Thanks.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody have anything else?
Uh, Fisher, I just want to give you a packet, smiles, attention session ahead of time, so that way. Alex, Steven, Johnson, Bush, so that way tomorrow, I'm not told that I didn't give you a packet, even though it's emailed to you all, and you have the information weeks in advance. This is one for Commissioner Frenchgo, please and thank you, and here's yours.
If nothing else, like motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, just one last thing I guess to bring up, uh, we got a list here printed out, we've had thirty workshops and thirty seven meetings. Which is a sixty seven, uh, which is over the threshold of fifty meetings we need to have. Um, commissioners, and upon guidance from C C A O. We more than qualify, we want to meet the standard of what we, we need to meet. So if we could, if we don't, even if we don't do it today, we need to start planning. Our end of the year schedule on how we are gonna meet, when we are gonna meet. And see if there's any conflicts that you see, if you have a schedule, Fisher, of, of any potential conflicts we may have. Um. I would say that we're, the rest of October, I don't see any conflicts on my schedule. For workshop and regular meetings for the rest of October.
I got, I, we got two calendars.
Don't need to know today, I.
Yeah, let's, let's.
It would, it would be nice to know soon, because we have.
I mean, if we just discuss it now loosely, and to see which ones may be out, like, October looks good for me. November, um, I don't think we should have a meeting on election day, the fifth, that's a workshop day, and. I would be even open to not having a meeting or a regular meeting on the fifth or sixth, just. In fairness of it being election week and the night before, it'd be stressful for a lot of people and.
As long as it's not, um. Interfering with the amount of meetings that we have.
Well, that's what you said, we have sixty seven already.
Okay.
So, a- according to C C L, we're already over the threshold, but if the counties work and wait that week, I'd be open to.
That's fine.
That, um.
Obviously Thanksgiving, we, we usually take off.
Remember, we usually do budget hearings right around that time.
Okay.
And also department heads, they're asking, really till the end of the year, I know you don't, maybe want to discuss December right now, but.
Well, I do know, we do have a court hearing scheduled for December eighteenth, that is a regular meeting day. Um, the next week is the twenty fifth, which is Christmas Day. Christmas Eve, so that week I would think there would be nothing, and then.
Three weeks is a long way to go with no meeting.
Yeah, understand.
Said you have a court hearing on the eighteenth.
Right.
Did you maybe do the workshop on sixteen, only meeting on the seventeenth?
Or seventeenth and the nineteenth. That work for you, Fisher, at least that day?
Yeah.
Then let's, let's look at the nineteenth for a meeting on that day. And that may be, just looking at it, the, uh. Following week is Christmas, and then we're into January first, so that may be the last meeting down of the year would be the nineteenth.
So, no meeting this week, just so. There are no meetings on Thanksgiving, we will have budget hearings that week.
Well, we haven't set that, yeah, we're, we're trying to get an idea.
There's not a meeting that week, it makes, it actually kind of makes sense to do budget hearings on that.
That's how they.
Yes. I'm okay.
So it would be what, Monday, Tuesday?
But no meeting. And then, week of the eighteenth of December, said.
Week of the eighteenth, we have a, we have a coordinating schedule for all three commissioners on the eighteenth at ten thirty, so we'll move that to the nineteenth.
Move the, move the meeting to the nineteenth. And, uh. Obviously, the week of Christmas, no meetings.
Unless you wanted to squeeze one in on a meeting on the thirtieth, on a Monday, the day before. Um, New Year's Eve, or do we want our last meeting to be?
No workshop, just a regular meeting.
Well, you're gonna have your rework at the.
Yeah.
That technically is the beginning of January first, that's so, you're looking at a new.
Yeah.
We, yeah, that week's, it's the way that it times up, but your rework should be that first week of January, which is also, which begins at thirty.
Bill Danso and I looked at that, actually, it could be done the first two days.
There you are.
With a reord, but I, I, we were always, we almost did it the first week in that.
So.
Well, with January first being on a Wednesday.
It would be one of these two days, that would be.
You would second, well, yeah, second or third, uh, right, or second.
So you could, yeah.
So we could do it.
Yes. And again, I don't need to know right now about that. But I do.
Potentially as of right now, the last meeting of this board would be December nineteenth.
Again, that's fluid and.
It's fluid, at least to give a heads up for.
Yes.
Anything else, anybody? Make sure you're good.
We have a transfer, or a. Love it's for damn meeting with the. Board of Parks, Metro Parks, and, uh, Warren Township trustees. And a half hour in this building, so that will be public, also to be televised and people will listen on that. And, uh, that's in discussions, a special meeting called. To discuss the final report of the Love It's For Blowhead Dam Study prepared by D L C.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
A second.
Yes.
Yes.